We'll call this meeting to order. This is Thursday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten o'clock in the morning. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santinez?
Ah, here.
Mayor Protem Dunton?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here.
Public comments. Mr. Stewart.
Pursuant to Governor Code Section five-four-nine-five-four-point-three, the public may address the City Council on matters listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on a listed item should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes.
All right, so if you'd like to come forward and make some public comments, we're ready and willing to do that. Being known, we'll move on to item four A. Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is consideration possible action and conduct a public hearing to consider adopting Resolution number twenty-three dash forty-seven, resolution authorizing city manager to execute purchase and sale agreement, number nine-three-two-point-one, in a form approved by the city attorney between the City of Bellflower and Bellflower Manager LLC for the acquisition of real property located at one-seven-six-three-four Bellflower Boulevard. What this is, in essence, is a purchase and sale agreement between the city and the Bellflower project, which would be Azure Development, and Vanessa Delgado, who's here today. And it is a move to acquire the product, to get the property free, and that would allow Ms. Delgado to get the financing necessary to complete the project at one-seven-six-three-four Bellflower Boulevard. We have today a resolution and the guidelines on what we think is a good deal, a safe deal for the city, and we're looking for the council's approval on that, and the authority for the city manager to execute the agreement, which I believe we have final language on now after several passes through the city attorney's office, my office, and Ms. Delgado's office. And it's a public hearing, so the appropriate thing to do is to be open to the public hearing, and I believe that Ms. Delgado will be available to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Do you have any questions of staff at this point, anything that's been reported?
I do have a conflict on this.
Okay.
You have to step out.
That's what I was saying.
So, Councilmember Wendy Morris has a property conflict, so she stepped out of the room? So, looking for a motion to open a public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question.
Yes.
Maybe the city attorney can explain in terms of the legal mechanism on how the transaction is going to occur, because the, from reading this staff report, the seller doesn't own the property yet, but she has the right to purchase the property. So, for the benefit of the public, I want the city attorney to explain how the transaction will be recorded in terms of conveyance and things like that.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, perhaps we should open the public hearing, so this will be part of the record, and then you can ask the applicant as well in a thumbnail sketch of things. Azure Development has a right to purchase the property, and my last understanding of it was that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars had already been put down as down payment toward the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar purchase price. There was five-hundred-thousand dollars outstanding. The city will purchase the property for five-hundred-thousand dollars through Azure Development, which will provide the city with a grant deed for that property. At that point, the city will own it in fee. Azure Development will then have a three-year option to purchase the property back at five-hundred-thousand dollars plus CPI, and will also have the option of being able to extend that option for two additional years for twenty-five-thousand dollars a year. But, just to make it very clear, the city will own the property in fee pursuant to a grant deed that will be obtained through Azure Development when that last five-hundred-thousand dollars is put down as the purchase price to acquire the property.
Okay.
We'll put it into an escrow account, and as the city manager mentioned, we already have a purchase and sale agreement put together and approved in concept. That will be secured with a deed of trust and also with a promissory note. In the event things go south, we can attach to the property that Azure Development does own. So, for whatever reason, we don't get the grant deed to the property that the city's purchasing, we still have the right to acquire the property through foreclosure if we have to on the property that's actually owned by Azure Development as of today. But perhaps the applicant can explain more if you have additional questions with regard to the transaction.
I just kind of follow up. So, from a legal perspective, you're ensuring the city council that the city will be well protected with this transaction.
As you know, I like a belt and suspenders and girdle approach to things, so I think that the girdle is the deed of trust and the promissory note. So, I'm certain, and I've conferred with the city manager on it, and I think we're very comfortable with the process as set forth. It's not elegant. On the other hand, it will achieve what we need to achieve.
That's the bottom line. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart, does Mr. Diolanga have anything to present on this? Are we moving past, or does he present the property profile or anything?
It's his court if he wants to.
I had a presentation, Mr. Stewart, pretty much covered everything, as well as the city attorney with the deal points and so forth, so they've covered it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Looks like you're ready, willing, and able.
Well, you always have to be.
He's got a twenty-minute PowerPoint. I'm sure you really want to see it. I don't want to omit anybody, you know. All right, let's move on to opening the public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santinez, supported by Mayor Protem Ray Dunton. Without objection, that'll be the order. So, we have a public hearing. Anybody want to come forward? Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Vanessa Delgado. I am technically the manager for Bellflower Manager. And a great question, the city attorney explained, but we technically have a grant deed already, so there is ownership we can transfer over. But, the city has devised a system where you won't get title until it's fully clean and unencumbered. So, we're comfortable with that. The city attorney is not joking that it's a belt, suspenders, all of that. Not, I feel it. But it's a good thing. I want this to be something that's comfortable for the city. The intention simply is to make a good situation out of this terrible financial situation that we're all in, and in exchange, I've tried to be a good neighbor and help. I actually have my leasing agent now working with the gentleman across the street, so we can try to create a good environment in that area, just to be good back to the city. So, if you have any questions about the transaction, please let me know, but this will go a long way to helping us finish the project.
So, when you say the gentleman across the street, are you referring to Mr. Gold? Or who's across the street?
Yeah, yeah. So, if you notice, we now have the same leasing agent signs up.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know you're working on redeveloping the whole area, and I know I'm not the only one in a crazy financial situation, so if I can help by making sure we all, we get good tenants in that area, I will.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, Ms. Diolaga?
I just have a comment, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Delgado, thank you so much for offering this property, because it's the last piece of the puzzle, so to speak, and I'm very excited that the city will be able to kind of assist you, because if you recall, we had a grand opening of Starbucks sometime last year. It's over a year now, I think, right?
Yeah.
It's been over a year, and this is a long time coming. So, I'm really pleased that we're able to lend a helping hand.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Vanessa, are we done with the previous owner on this?
This will make it so that we're done.
So, this will make, because he's still in the background, is there, do we believe that he'll play along?
Yeah. Actually, that's why we ended up with this unelegant situation, because he wanted to lease back the building, if you all remember.
Right.
And is no longer interested. So, yeah, this will make it so that...
So, he's just waiting for final payment, then?
Yeah. Yeah, and he'll, the way this is devised is the city ensures first that he's paid, and that encumbrance is gone before the transfer happens, so you won't have to interact with him.
So, do you have the, in agreement, or is it a deed in deed form, that once upon payment, the property, the rest of the property is released? Or is he?
Mr. I think they have an open escrow with Mr. Labadidi now on the purchase and sale of that property, so that's what will close the escrow.
So, essentially, the payment is the equivalent of what he's owed on the note, and so that will be paid first before the city, and the city wants to see proof that it's paid, and then we'll get claim title.
I'm just asking because of the past actions of over the years, and that's all.
Yeah.
So, we're really close. Thank you.
Yeah, and then we'll demolish the building.
Well, yeah, with my other question. So, you're going to, so once this transaction is done or something, then you'll be demolished in the building?
Yep. Yeah, so it's an attractive nuisance still.
Yeah.
It'll help everybody.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
How long have you been in escrow with the current?
Well, so we did this settlement in two thousand one, I believe? I mean, twenty-one, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, two thousand one would have been out of the allotment. Twenty-one. Yeah, yeah. And so, he got his first payment then, and then really didn't begin to lease the building back, so...
And so, you've had a bona fide escrow whereby they've done title search and made sure there's no other encumbrances on the property?
Yeah. Yeah, we do have that.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you for your testimony. We'll see if anybody else wants to bring anything forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else have anything they want to say about this item in the public hearing? If not, look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion?
Oh, one moment, okay.
I don't know if it's in regards to this. Bear with me, it's my first time, I am a little nervous. It may not even be on topic to this address, but I'm a resident here. I actually live on Belmont Street. My name is Amanda Walker. I live on the other side of Bellflower Boulevard, and I have some very concerning, very concerning situation regarding neighbors that have been harassing our community.
Yeah, we had public comments at the beginning, and that was when you were supposed to come forward.
I know, I think I missed that, it was like a small window a second. So, like I said, this is my first time doing this, maybe you can tell me how to go about this.
I recommend we close the public hearing, consider this item, and then invite her back up to make her comments after.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmembers Victor Sanchez, supported by Councilmember Sunny Santinez, to close the public hearing. Without objection, that'll be the order. So, what is your pleasure on this? Any more discussion?
Need a motion?
Need a motion, go forward if you'd like.
Okay, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash forty-seven, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement, file number nine-three-two-point-one, in a form approved by the city attorney between Bellflower and Bellflower Manager LLC for acquisition of the property at seventeen-six-three-four.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we have Mayor Protem Ray Dunton has made a motion to support this project, was supported by Councilmembers Victor Sanchez. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Morse? Councilmember Morse?
She's recused.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right. Vanessa, you're all set? All right, ma'am, if you'd like to come up and tell us about your Belmont thing right now? No?
That's okay.
Okay. Just one moment, we're going to get one more council member back here, and we can all hear it. Thank you, Wendy. Let the record show that Wendy Morris has rejoined us on the council.
Okay.
Please go forward.
Okay, let me plead my case. I've been a resident here in Bellflower for over twenty years. The last few years, we've had neighbors on our street, on Belmont Street, that have been an absolute nuisance. They're constantly playing loud music, they're constantly bullying other tenants. I wrote down a few things. Loud vulgar music, blaring the horn, threatening and harassing not only myself, but a few other neighbors. I do know that they are gang affiliated. I have gone to the Lakewood Sheriff's Station on several occasions. A few of us residents are terrified of them. Like I said, they bully and they harass us. I've gone to their landlord, I've contacted my landlord to speak to their landlord. I'm kind of in a situation where I don't know what to do. I'm afraid to come outside of my home. I can't enjoy things anymore, like taking my dog out, watering my grass. Just an absolute nuisance. I wanted to bring it to your guys' attention in hopes that you can lead me in the right direction on how to go about this situation. I am terrified for my life. I am carrying a child. I don't know what else to do. I've tried to talk to them, it hasn't gone anywhere. It's been a few years of this. The last year and a half has been at its worst. They're violent people. Like I said, they're gang affiliated. It's just a nuisance to our whole entire street on Belmont, between Orchard and Ardmore. I have a few other neighbors that are willing to come forward and write statements on what they've endured from these, from this family. They really are taken away from our right to quiet enjoyment on a daily basis. I can go on with, I feel like saying small little incidents is just adding up of their inconsideration, their disrespect. They're very cruel people, and they are now threatening and harassing me physically, trying to harm me. I don't know what to do.
Okay, so this is the first time you reported to the city, but you've been dealing with Lakewood sheriffs?
I have. I have a few different incident reports. I'm even a little bit afraid to file a restraining order, because they want to hurt me. They live so close. Our driveway, my driveway, I should say, divides our buildings, and they have no respect or common courtesy for our property. So, what's happened is, is they've been asked to please respect our property, and instead of being kind about it, they're offended and disrespectful, and it's just gotten worse. It's gotten to the point where I have to look out my window before I step outside, because I have to walk down my driveway to my vehicle and pass their front door. I pray before I get home that they're not outside, so that I don't encounter them. Friday, December first, was one of the worst situations.
Your testimony time is up.
Is it over? Down? Okay, excuse me.
Did you write your name on the roster there?
I can go on.
We make a recording to this, and we're going to make minutes, so we're going to use that as a basis.
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Hawkman's there.
And we have Mr. Hawkman over here. He's our Director of Public Safety, and he's going to work with you to try to figure out how to best solve the situation.
Thank you for your time today.
No, fine, thanks for coming in. He's very effective. This is our first rodeo, so we'll try to figure something out for you.
It is my first rodeo.
No, and we appreciate you coming.
It's my last.
So, the guy in the red shirt right there, he's going to help you out. All right, Mr. Stewart, five A.
These are the consideration items. These are the renewals, consideration of renewals of the cannabis permits, and Mr. Seis has a brief staff report for you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good morning, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is to consider annual renewals of ten CBPs for dispensary cultivation and distribution uses in the city. All current CBPs are set to expire at the end of this month, on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. So, renewal applications and application review fees were submitted to the city through October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. All applications were reviewed and summarized in the staff report and are attached to this item. There are seven applicants seeking renewal of a total of ten CBPs, which includes four dispensary uses, four distribution uses, and two cultivation uses. I'm going to begin with applicant Elliot Lewis's applications for Catalyst Bellflower LLC, Catalyst Distro LLC, and EEO Holdings LLC, located at nine-zero-three-two-two-nine-zero-three-eight Artesia Boulevard. So, on June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, the City Council granted the approval of a modification application submitted by Mr. Lewis. This modification application approved a modification to name Catalyst Bellflower LLC as the CBP permutee for the dispensary use, and approve a modification to name Catalyst Distro LLC as the CBP permutee for the distribution use, and approve a request to convert its previously held manufacturing permit to a second distribution permit, and naming Distro A LLC as the CBP permutee for the additional distribution CBP. In its renewal application, the permutee did indicate that it is still in the process of transferring the license to Distro A LLC through the State Department of Cannabis Control. So therefore, the applicant is seeking a renewal for one of the city distribution CBPs under EEO Holdings LLC until the state finalizes the license transfer. And then, upon completion of that license transfer at the state level, the city CBP will transfer to Distro A LLC, and this was as approved by the city council at the June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three regular city council meeting. The other two permits are active with the state, and the permutee began conducting retail sales on May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, and distribution operations on August twenty-first, two thousand twenty. The applicant also mentioned the expanded distribution operations are anticipated to commence very soon, this month or next month. And the city did review law enforcement calls for service for the property, which are listed in Attachment A, the application review. The majority of the calls did result in deputies finding no evidence of a crime, and the permutee did note, though, an incident between a customer and security personnel at the location, and an incident regarding a broken window, a broken car window. And these are all detailed in the permutee's application, which included, which is included with the staff report. There are no code enforcement cases on the property, and the applicant is current on all taxes permitted to the city. So, next is the Medicine Woman Group LLC, which is located at ninety-fifty-eight Rose Street, and they currently hold two permits for dispensary and distribution uses. The permutee noted that it will not be renewing its distribution CBP due to the use not being economical at this time. The dispensary license is current and active with the state, and the business continues to operate. The city did review law enforcement calls for the address and found there were some calls regarding complaints of things like loud music and smoking. However, for the majority of the calls, the responding deputies did not find any violations. There are no current code enforcement cases on the property, and the applicant is current on all taxes permitted to the city. Next up is NC Three Systems, doing business as Deli by Caliva. They're located at nine-five-three-five Artesia Boulevard, and they have one CBP for a dispensary use. Caliva's license with the state is active, and Caliva is current on taxes that it remits to the city. Code enforcement did issue a recent notice of permit required for the installation of a roll-up door, and the permutee is working with city staff to address this notice of violation. And there was a law enforcement call for service that resulted in deputies not finding any violation at the property. The next CBP applicant is Joint Forces LLC, which is located at one-zero-zero-four-zero and one-zero-zero-four-two Artesia Place. The permutee is seeking to renew three CBPs for dispensary, distribution, and cultivation uses. As shown in its application, the permutee has current state licenses, and all operations have commenced. The city did review law enforcement calls for this address and found there was a report of a brick thrown through a window at the location, and an incident involving a security guard and a customer. So, that is also in the application that the permutee provided. But there aren't our code enforcement cases on this property, and Joint Forces is current with all tax payments that it remits to the city. All right, and lastly, we have Dynasty Alliance Grow Inc., which is located at eighty-eight-thirty-two Ramona Street. It has two permits, one for cultivation and one for distribution. The permutee does have valid state licenses, and there are no code enforcement cases on the property currently. Dynasty Alliance Grow is current on all tax payments it remits to the city. The applicant did report a burglary at the location that occurred on April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. So, the permutee indicated in its renewal application that the burglary did result in the loss of about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of product. So, it should be noted that there wasn't any indoor surveillance video provided to law enforcement of the incident, and there was no report of a security guard on site at the time of that burglary. So, the conditions of approval, they do mention for cultivation facilities that a security guard does have to be on site twenty-four-seven. So, code enforcement did do an inspection of the property. They do biannual inspections of cultivation facilities, and on October, or October of this year, they did an inspection, and the permutee did indicate that the security guard is on site twenty-four-seven. So, that completes a brief summary of the renewal applications for the ten CBPs. If all of the CBPs are renewed today, then the city will collect renewal fees that total approximately three-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand dollars, and this is based on the annual permit fees and education fees collected. This is per individual cannabis business permit. And additionally, the cannabis tax revenue collected during the last four quarters totaled approximately three-point-five million dollars. So, with that, the summary of the recommendations are here up on the screen. For Catalyst Bellflower LLC, the recommendation is to consider approving renewal of one CBP for a dispensary use. For Catalyst Distro LLC, consider approving renewal of one CBP for a distribution use. And for EEO Holdings LLC, consider approving renewal of one CBP for a distribution use. For the Medicine Woman Group LLC, consider approving renewal of one CBP for a dispensary use. And for NC Three Systems, doing business as Deli by Caliva, consider approving renewal of one CBP for Deli by Caliva for a dispensary use. And then, for Joint Forces LLC, consider approval of renewing three CBPs for dispensary, distribution, and cultivation uses. And then, lastly, for Dynasty Alliance Grow Inc., consider approving renewal of two CBPs for cultivation and distribution uses. So, that completes a brief overview of the staff report, and we have the applicants that are available to answer any questions, along with staff. And our recommendation is to allow for Elliot Lewis actually to provide testimony on his applications, or, because he actually has another hearing to get to. So, if we can start with Elliot, then we'll move down the list here. Okay?
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff before we move forward? Seeing none. So, if you're going to give testimony, we're going to swear you in at this point, and so on any of these items, or any of these applicants, you can all stand. We're not going to just do the first one. So, if you're going to give testimony, this acting city clerk will administer the oath right now.
Thank you, Mayor. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the testimony you are about to give in the matter pending before the City Council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
How you guys doing?
Always fun to see you.
Yeah, always good to be here.
You've read, we've heard the report, we've heard about your operation. Is there anything about the operation that you want to share with us that may not be in the report?
Yeah, so just to give a little more nuance to the moving aspect, so we're almost going to move from A to C. I'll give you the fifth grade version if you want the hyper-complex version. We got Millie here that could give it to you. But it's not just that easy to, like, move the product to the other place. You have to get the metric tags first. They only give you a limited amount of metric tags, et cetera, et cetera. The short version is, we should have everything in A, we're busting out of the seams there, into C, and then we'll be able to surrender the A license, and then complete the final move, which is having each one in its own entity. So, we should be moving shortly, you know, from A to C. Frankly, I don't want to quite give a date, just in case, but we're very, very close, and that's imminent, and then we'll have, you know, basically completed the three-way switch. I want to bring up one point. Last year, I promised Mr. Inez that the distributor, the distribution facility would, in two years, outpay more tax at one percent than the retail facility. I would say we're about sixty, sixty-five percent there, so as somebody that's backed up most of, I think, all of what we said, next year, we will see what pays more tax, the distribution or the retail. But we do appreciate distributing for our whole facility here in Bellflower. We're at about eighty-five percent of our products, and we get the back space, and then we'll still have the additional space if we need it, you know, everywhere in Southern California, everywhere for now, and then I think eventually we will need a Northern California hub will be run through Bellflower. And that's becoming, even though one percent, a sizable number for you guys.
Well, that's something to look forward to.
Yeah.
And Sunny remembers everything, so he'll hold, if we don't, he will hold you accountable.
Yeah, don't worry, so do I. I, I'm, how do I put that? I'm not above spiking the football when I'm correct in a polite and humorous manner, but... But the other thing I'll say too, and I'm not just saying this to blow smoke, you know, we work in a lot of cities, in particular LA County, you know. Bellflower is by far the easiest city to do business in, so I just want to applaud staff and everybody. And again, you know, I say it publicly, not just when I'm here, you know, getting the renewal, but it's just a great place to do work. I heard they gave an award out. I don't know who actually votes for it, but I guarantee if you ask business owners here, what's the most business-friendly city in LA County, at least that we're in, and we're in quite a few, it's a Bellflower. I say that just objectively speaking the truth.
Great. Any of my council colleagues have questions? Mr. Elliot? Mr. Santinez?
King at me, yes.
Well, I know you always have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Elliot, and I'm glad you remembered what you said last year. Very good. So, I guess my first question to you is, in terms of your volume, is it where you expected this to be at this point?
It's about what, you know, I expected. Again, I said in two years, and we're sixty, sixty-five percent of the way there, so I think that I'm more of an under-promise, over-deliver. We've got a lot of new doors this year, so, you know, just general growth. We've got a lot of new doors this year, so, you know, just general growth. Usually the stories grow quite a bit in the first, you know, 12 to 18 months. So just those doors that we got, you know, will continue to grow and we should add some more. So, you know, Bellflower is getting the benefit of, of, you know, us using this as a distribution hub. Obviously, it's the, the Bellflower store, I think, is our second ranking store as far as revenue and the whole footprint as well. So it's just, you know, been a great place to, you know, economically as well to do business for us.
Well, it's not too bad. You're batting 600 or something like that. And which one, which one is your, which one is the biggest volume?
I wouldn't say that's 600. I said two years, and if I'm 60% of the way there.
Well, that's 600 to me.
I'd say I'm ahead of the pace of being 1,000, but just minor correction.
So, so which one is the best location? Yes, it's where our second best location.
Pomona is our, is our top-selling store. Bellflower is our, our second store.
Oh, really?
If you're curious, yeah.
So I'm just kind of curious, what do they have that we don't in terms of?
Well, I, I think there's a little more scarcity out there, so there's a lot of people, a lot of surrounding cities have banned, so there's that.
So there's less competition?
I, I think there's a little less competition and then, you know, I, I think that's probably the primary reason. And then, you know, our stores that do good always have, you know, good parking, freeway access. So our Bellflower location kind of like, you know, checks all the boxes. The good thing is if other cities do open around, and this has happened to us, being the first mover is a major advantage. So like, you know, whatever, let's, just for fun, I don't think they're going to do it down near Lakewood or somewhere goes, and we get a lot of customers from there. I do think it's a lot more difficult for new stores to peel off customers that have created habits over years versus coming into a market, which we've done, and trying to win customers. So the first mover will always, you know, in so much as it like peels off a little bit, you know, it's, it's hard to steal our customers.
Yeah, all right, very good. Thank you. It's always good to see you.
Yeah, you too. Appreciate you guys.
Mr. Sanchez, any questions?
No, Mr. Mayor, just a comment. You know, I appreciate all the work you guys have been doing in that area. I know you've been hosting events throughout the year and giving back to the community, so just want to say thank you for that. Everything from the report sounds, as usual, great from your end, and you've always delivered. I know you were the last of the, the game, but the first one to start. So just keep doing what you're doing. Hopefully, next year when you come back, you report back to the rest of these guys, the, the 100,000 number, whatever you want to do.
Well, now that I said it, I like, I stack these things in my mind, and I like to be like, yeah, you know, I delivered. So, you know, I figured I would bring that up, and I'm sure Mr. Inez will remember next year, so.
Happy holidays and that's.
Because I think he said I'm going to hold you to that, something to that effect. We could rewind the tape, but we'll see if we can make.
That's why we record everything.
That would be funny.
Mr. Dutton, have any questions or comments?
Is Bellflower distributing to Pomona?
Yes, sir.
Really?
Yeah, so you're getting, you know, a 1% lid wholesale. And so right now it distributes to every single one of our stores.
And we still can't beat them.
Well, you got to keep in mind, there's a, you got about 180,000 people in Bellflower, and if you take the surrounding areas, you know, Montclair, I won't go through them all, they're all banned, right? So, and, you know, I assume one day might come down a little bit, but we call that desert life. When you're in the cannabis desert, it's, you know, it's, it's nice.
Well, good job. Thank you.
Ms. Wendy Morris? All right. Thank you. So unless you have anything else, we'll let you sit down.
Okay.
Thank you. Procedurally, we're going to take testimony from all the applicants. We're not going to vote on them until the very end and then peel off if we have a concern, or how are we going to play this?
It's your choice.
So what, would you like to have them? We're going to do them one by one as to whether or not we're going to approve them.
Yeah, they can leave.
Oh, yeah.
I understand.
So, yeah, he's, I know that.
No, he's got another commitment somewhere, I know.
So it'd be good to wrap him up at least.
All right. All right. So.
Sorry. Come on, let me finish.
So you want a motion?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation for Catalyst Bellflower LLC and then Catalyst Distro LLC and EEL Holdings LLC.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So a motion by Councilmember Sunny Sanz Inez, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Dunton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Elliot.
Congratulations.
All right, we're going to take them in order as written on the screen here. So the Medicine Woman LLC, are they present and would come forward? Thanks for coming in. So you've seen the staff report, is there anything else you'd like to offer beyond what's written in the pages?
It covers everything. Sorry, it pretty much covers everything. I know that we went over the police reports as well, and most of that was, you know, the officers showing up after some of the neighbors complained and not really finding anything. So that was majorly my concern is, you know, making sure the community's taken care of. So if you guys have any questions, we can answer them for you.
Yeah, we'll state your name for the record just.
My name is Brandon Scadron.
All right, so write it down there and we'll make sure it's in the minutes spelled correctly. The, have you any concern for the agreement you have with the property owner on continuing to operate there?
I'm going to let Damian take that question.
All right, David, sign in there, please.
Damian Collins?
All right.
We're still currently in litigation, so the next hearing that we have on that is June, June 23rd, I think, of 2024. There is a lot of talk of settlement with them, so that's kind of where we're at right now.
So you're leasing the property and you're in litigation with the current owner, is that it?
Since the day that we opened.
Well, it's not a new case then, is it?
No, it's four, four-plus years in court, million dollars in attorney fees.
But you feel at, you're in no worse or better place, shape, on continuing to operate on that location?
Yes, we're, we're confident that we can, we're downwind, and we're confident that we can continue to operate.
You know, occasionally we used to get complaints from, or concerns from one of the ladies in the neighboring trailer parks. Is she still, is she still active?
Yeah, yeah, that's most of the reports, actually.
All right. So you've worked with her best you can, and it doesn't seem to help.
Yeah, not really. I mean, we do everything we can to appease her, and, you know, we're very friendly with her. Many times she has concerns, or come on in and talk to us. By now, we kind of just, you know, keep our distance from each other, and she'll follow through.
Okay. All right, we're going to have some other questions here possibly. We'll start on this end. Ms. Morris, would you like to ask any questions?
Um, since I am new, so I wasn't aware of all the background, or most of it. I did have concerns when I saw the law enforcement calls and reading them. I see where, you know, the law enforcement doesn't always get there quickly, so sometimes things move on on their own. And not that loud music coming from a car is your guys' problem or anything you guys can do about, but do you guys have anything else in place that kind of helps alleviate some of those issues? If it, it may not even be people going to your establishment, it could be someone else.
We have a security guard, right? When you walk in the door that has cameras to anything, so anything that's on our property, he can address immediately.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's pretty much the best we can do.
Okay.
Yeah, we've assigned them, no one's allowed to.
Please use the mic so we can hear you.
No one's allowed to sit in their cars, use cannabis on property, you know, hang out, any of that stuff. So if he sees that, he'll come out and address it right away.
Awesome.
That's typically why when they get there, they're already gone, because he's already taken care of it, so.
Thank you. That was my only real concern.
Mr. Dutton?
Just to follow up to Ms. Morris, when you first opened, wasn't there a security guard outside?
No, he's, he's always been posted right in the front door.
In the front door, does he go, does he walk in Rover?
Yeah, he does come out and roam and then go back in, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
All, all day.
I just remember there was something, circulation of a security guard in the parking lot in the early days.
Yeah, he comes out, does a thorough check of the premise, comes back in for a little bit, he doesn't occasionally do that.
And I know we've talked about the litigation, it's came up before. Is it with a property owner?
Yeah.
Is it, okay, was the property owner a partner at one time?
No.
No.
So he was my attorney, and then he was disbarred.
The property owner was your attorney?
Uh huh.
Was it a cannabis attorney?
Trust, cannabis, everything.
Okay.
He was disbarred over, over some stuff, and we were supposed to have the right to buy the building. He had us assign our rights to purchase the building so that he could facilitate a 1031 exchange. He gave us a million verbal assurances that we could buy the building back as soon as he found his upleg. He did a right, a right to repurchase, to cherish, but he made it to an entity, not to the business, I mean, not to the building itself. So then when we went to exercise the right to repurchase the building, they had told us that he had put a ton of debt against it, so all we would be buying is debt.
Gotcha. Okay, that's kind of what I remember then, is, I think you guys do too, but I think I remember there was, it's pretty convoluted.
Yeah, he was, I mean, he was my, my attorney for 20 years.
Wow. Was he disbarred just recently?
Financial abuse.
Just recently?
No, in 2008, right after we got approved.
Nice, okay.
So, yeah, he got financial crimes on the elderly, so.
Yeah, okay.
It was good.
All right, well, thank you. That was, that's like clears that up.
Is that all your questions?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Sanchez, any questions or comments?
No, look, I mean, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Wendy's, you know, Councilmember Morris said it correctly. It's some of these things that were listed on here, I mean, I see that there's more calls to this location than any of our other locations. It sounds like it's the same repeat individual, and a lot of this stuff, some of it doesn't seem like concerning them. So it might be a conversation for us to have separately with our own Public Safety Director. So I'll just table it for this point, at this point.
You can see in the reports that they list her name in a couple of them, so.
Yeah, like I said, I'll, I'll think this is a more of a separate meeting or a separate conversation. But, but I do want to work to addressing this, because this is a, not the kind of use that we want our, our deputies going through. I mean, we have so many other problems going on, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sanchez is the district member or a council that, so he's more sensitive to things that happen.
Yeah, and I agree with them, there is much more pressing issues that they could be handling than coming up for.
Mr. Sanz Inez?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It must be so disrupting to your operation to have someone check it out for any, because I was looking at the, the call logs also, and it seems like it's come from the same, the same person. What else can you do in terms of public relations with this person? Can you engage someone else to really?
Honestly, I, I don't have an answer. If I knew, I would have done it already for sure. I mean, I've been a manager there for.
So there's nothing more you can do.
For four years, and it's been the same person over and over, so.
But we even put cat food out for her cats.
Yeah, we.
Take everything trying to.
Okay, all right.
That's above and beyond.
You went the extra mile already, okay.
We have all of our staff, there's a rule, you can't park in front of our house. I mean, we can't really make the customers not do it. If they pull up and it's open, they're going to take the spot. She's paying the curbs, we abide to that, you know, she puts signs up. You know, nobody in our, in our group, in our employment are allowed to park there. You know, there's all kinds of things we've been trying to do to appease her, but some people you just can't win, I guess.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's just like, it's kind of a waste of our city resources and also your resources too.
I agree.
So, anyway, changing the subject, I'm curious about your distribution permit, you're giving it up. Can you shed more light into why? I just want to understand.
Couple of things, like we don't have 20 stores to distribute to, like Elliot, and that's where like he's doing most of his business is to his own stores. The distribution margins are so small now to go outsource, and then we had a couple major of our two largest clients, one went out of business and one basically still owes us a ton of money, which pretty much sunk our operating capital to do it.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
So, you know, you said your operating capital, so financially, are you stable?
The retail is very stable.
Okay. Does it continue to grow? You heard some of the statistics offered by Mr. Elliot. Are you having the same kind of trajectory?
We're not growing as fast as they are. They're on a, the, we have several disadvantages for us. We're on a side street, you know, I'm being on Rose. We have less parking, being on Rose, and, you know, we don't have the visibility to the easy on, easy off the freeway either. So it's, you know, I know you guys hated sign spenders, but that was like something, and we still don't do it.
And we still hate sign spenders, so.
But like our audience is older, you know, per se, so we don't, we don't, our marketing on the, through Facebook and Instagram and TikTok and all that, doesn't have the same effect as it does, you know, in other, in other places or other businesses.
Yeah, we've gotten pretty creative. We did some marketing where, you know, sent out some letters and did some door hangers and walked the neighborhoods and talked to the community, but as far as advertising, like you said, social media, something like that, just doesn't hit our target market.
And we're spending, you know, somewhere around 5% for marketing, which is.
5% of your gross sales are dedicated to marketing, is that what you're saying?
Uh huh. So, I mean, that's, you can't really come up with.
Other than the sign spenders, I don't see much promotion. Maybe I'm not reading your stuff, so.
I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have flyers, we had the billboards, we had everything.
But it's, based on what I heard from Mr. Elliot, it's creatures of a habit. Once you've got a customer, they're loyal to you.
Right, and that's where most of our, our business is coming from, is current customer.
Have any questions of us? Is a third gentleman up there, does he need to offer his?
This is Roy, Roy, he's our CFO.
Oh, he's the, he's the money guy. All right, well, thank you all for coming in and giving testimony, and we'll see what we can do to help you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, guys, you want to discuss this one, and girls? Is there anything that we may have got to learn about here that we haven't seen?
Well, I think other than the frequent phone calls, seems like from the same person. See what we can do about it, you know?
Right.
Right, and like, I stated earlier, and like Councilmember Inez is mentioning, Sanz Inez is saying, I think it's a conversation outside of this meeting, but I think it's one that we should have and look into.
Okay. So I can use a motion to approve or not on this item?
I'll make a motion then.
Okay.
Move Medicine Woman Group LLC for renewal of their dispensary permit at 9058 Rose.
Second motion?
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protam Ray Dunton, supported by Councilmember Sunny Sanz Inez. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Dunton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. All right, you're dismissed unless you want to listen to the rest.
Congratulations.
All right, number three, looks like NC3 Systems doing business as Deli by Kaliva. Come forward, please. You know, our favorite guy, yeah.
Is it still NC3?
Yeah, what's your name this week?
Last meeting, so. Good for you, but anyway, she'll answer most of the questions, but I'm just here for support.
You brought backup now, huh?
You like us so much, you just want to be here, don't you? So you've read the report, you know, we know about what we think we know about you. Is there anything else you want to offer that's not in the report?
I don't think we have anything else to add. And then just for the record, my name is Chris Adams. I am the SoCal Regional Director. And so Deli Bellflower is one of my six stores that I oversee.
Have you signed our register?
I will.
All right, that way we can get your name spelling correct for the minutes. But tell us about your Bellflower stores compared to the others. Is it doing better, worse, average? How are we doing?
So Deli Bellflower is a neighborhood local dispensary. We have a lot of true, you know, kind of what the other dispensary operators have talked about already. A lot of local customers that continue to come back and CS. We share a lot of customers with Catalysts down the street. And they'll shop us on different days depending on the different deals that are offered. But we, you know, seek to provide the best in class cannabis retail experience for new and returning consumers, provide education. So we, you know, provide a lot of great product knowledge and staff training. So that our staff can provide some top notch product knowledge to our customers and answer any cannabis related questions that they might have on, you know, new products or their tried and true products.
I noticed from the report, and there were some photos of the interior, you've kind of changed things around from when we were first there and you operated. Was there a reason for that?
We haven't changed too much around. Some of the biggest changes from those initial pictures is we have a little bit more product offering out on and available at the registers. Things like quick little add-ons for customers, especially as we're going into the holidays. You know, some quick grab and go items. We still have the seating though, provided as we do have a large elderly client that likes to shop with us. And sometimes having that seat to provide a little bit more in-depth knowledge, so that's all still there and available for them.
Does your business increase in the holiday season?
It does, yes.
So people are giving cannabis as a gift?
They do, yes. They also.
I didn't consider that.
They also do tend to consume a little bit more themselves to help navigate the holidays.
Makes for a more Merry Christmas, I'm sure.
Yes, exactly.
You just don't know what to give somebody.
So now you have another option.
Right, give your wife a cannabis and a tattoo coupon, you know, different options and things you've never had before, so. So again, do you have any questions of us as to how we're doing with you and how your business in Bellflower is operating?
I don't, I don't think we have any questions on our side.
No, and we appreciate how attentive you were when the previous mayor asked that you bring in that list of folks that were participants.
Try to keep you guessing.
We do, we vote among ourselves in last meeting, then it was change and Sunny's over there and.
Change another guard.
Right, just to, just throw you off a little bit. All right, we're gonna, Mr. Santines, I'm sure will have a question, so we'll start on this end.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Was there any change in ownership since the last meeting you came here? I just wanted to make sure. You're under oath.
People have traded shares since the last meeting.
Okay, but not significant.
Nothing significant.
Okay, all right, very good. And, and let me just kind of follow up on the question on the, the roll up door. So where are you in terms of getting the permit on that?
Uh, Larry Thacker. Yeah, Larry Thacker, who's our head of Facilities Maintenance is working with the city on getting that remedied. So, yeah, we'll, we'll work on it quick. We also have our own construction division as well, so if we need to get them out, we can get them out.
So how soon do you think it's gonna be taken care of?
Do you want me to, under oath, put a date on there? I'd hate to do it.
Yes, you're under oath.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna fix it as fast as we can, so, how's that? I, I can't imagine it taking more than 30 days, but I, I hate to, I just hate that. It can, sometimes you pull in permits and all that kind of stuff and making sure you do the job right. So yes, we're, 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 I actually texted him when we're sitting there. He said, hey, give me an update on that, so.
We know Larry as well, so.
Uh, he was, he was the, he was the person who gave us a tour of the San Jose facility.
Right.
Way back before we even got into this business. Uh, can you speak on the microphone? Because you're being recorded also.
Yes, he said he spoke to Code Enforcement about 10 days ago. He's got to go and pull a permit. He's in LA this afternoon, he's gonna stop by the city today, so.
Oh, okay, awesome. And.
If he gets in a car wreck or something, he may not get there. I can't control that, but to my best knowledge.
Again, you're under oath and you're being recorded, okay? Just to make sure.
Plausible deniability.
Uh, and, and final question, how is your business now compared to the other stores that you have locally?
Uh, yeah, you go ahead and take that because of margins and stuff.
Yes, so Deli is, it's more of our neighborhood store. We don't see a ton of new incoming traffic. However, we are working and doing some new marketing efforts and, and things that will impact our customer in the way that they're reached best. We also have like a loyalty program that brings our customers in and we've done refer friends where customers, if they bring their, their friends in and make a purchase, we offer a discount on top of that additional product knowledge. So it's growing. It's, it's interesting though. We're in this flux with, as more cities open, you know, open up their doors to more dispensaries coming in. We're in that constant kind of state of flux. So some of the cities that we currently deliver to, like West Covina being one of them, will probably see a little dip in that in some of our delivery services, just because they'll be opening their city to dispensary licenses.
And one of the things, so as, as an industry, everything's kind of trending. It's actually trending up, so we're, we're growing revenue. It's not maybe as fast as we'd want it to be, but it's, it's really steady growth.
It's growing, yeah, yeah.
It's growth.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, there's some stores where we lost this year, but we've got some mega stores like in Airfield that does about 30 million a year. But there's only eight stores in all of San Jose. So here we got a little bit more competition, but I think, you know, as far as profits and margins go, we, we're running the store efficiently and we won't make a lot.
Very good. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Santin, uh, Mr. Sanchez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Out of the eight applicants, well, technically, I guess Elliot is one, but out of all the applicants, all, all the, most of the locations except for one, which is Green Wolf, are in my district. And I just want to say that you guys are very visible on Artesia and you've got the security guard out there. It's very professional, very friendly. Keep the area clean all the time. I drive by there all the time. I live right around the corner. So, and, and just want to highlight how you guys have really had no law enforcement engagement that goes to the visibility you guys are doing there in the front. So just want to thank you for that. Most, most people, when they talk to me, it's always very positive that the interaction there you guys have created. So just want to say thank you for that and that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Victor Sanchez. All right, Mr. Sanchez, let's do a, Councilmember Ray Dunton.
Hi. Um, do you have two security guards, one on the inside and one on the outside posted, or?
Yes, so it depends on the hours of the business. We do, for the chunk of the day, our busiest hours have two security guards on post.
One at the podium at the outside and one inside.
Always one outside to check age verification and then one inside during our busiest hours.
Yeah, that's what I remembered seeing in the early days when it opened, whatnot. You mentioned that you deliver as far away to West Covina. That's pretty far, so how far do you, is it West Covina, you deliver further from Bellflower to West Covina further than that?
Not really.
But that's like your distance or just?
Yeah, on the east side and then.
Do you deliver to Long Beach?
Yes, we do, yeah.
And Long Beach has a lot of them.
They do, they do, but we've got a nice loyal customer in Long Beach and San Pedro as well, so.
San, you deliver to San Pedro?
Mm-hmm.
And I guess you go to Orange County too?
We do.
Do you deliver to Santa Ana?
We do.
Really? Because they, they're big on the cannabis there too, okay.
Yes.
So you got a footprint from Bellflower's store.
Yeah, and I think speaking to what Elliot spoke about earlier too, we were one of the dispensaries that started delivering to those areas a little sooner than some of the other dispensaries in those areas. So I think, you know, we have those tried and true customers that return.
Do you hire a delivery service that does it, or?
No, we often.
In-house, you have your own drivers and they use their own vehicles?
You have to, that's, that's part of the rule. You gotta have your own staff.
Your own staff, oh, for the cannabis, got it. So it's, you know, their employees that use their cars or something.
Gray area, some people operate in, but ours are.
I'm just curious, this is a curious question is all. And do your delivery service, is that like 50% of your business?
Um, it was at one point. We're seeing a little bit more of a trend to lean towards retail being a higher end.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Do you deliver to? Yeah. Yeah, 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 gotcha. Do you deliver to any of your store, other stores?
We do not, no.
Yeah, but just all people that call, they call in and say, this is so and so, they got accounts or something?
We do it online to help manage, yeah.
So it's like Amazon?
Kind of, yeah, yeah. We do, same day.
Yeah, same day, okay. That's it. I was just curious about that aspect. I never asked that before and I'm sure my colleagues was interested in that too.
Want to ride along on a delivery?
Ride alongs. That'd be interesting. All right, thank you so much.
Ms. Morse?
I, I do have a, more of a curious question, I guess, too. On the law enforcement service call where it was a child left alone in a parked vehicle, you may or may not know this answer, but was it your own security that discovered that? Or do you, was it, because you have onsite security, so I was just kind of curious, um.
I don't know the particulars around that.
Okay.
Honestly, it was. It was all before the police even showed up. We frowned upon that. We don't want kids left alone in cars.
That's why I was kind of curious if it was your own security. Absolutely, yes. Uh, my other, and this is just because, for knowledge base, are, are all cannabis dispensaries, do you all require the ID? Do you guys also, the ID scanned before?
Part of the rules and regs, we do electronic scan, another check at the, we do a check at the door then and then another check at the register.
Okay. Right, okay, thank you. That was all my questions.
Thank you. Is there, as retailers, and you saw your competition here, it seems like it's friendly rivalry, is, or how would you best say you?
I've known Elliot for 15 years.
Well, there you go, but you guys, you're, you know, I was in the appliance business and we, we were always worried about the guy buying the washer down the street and you're cutting it by five bucks, so he doesn't go down there. And then you, you see him at a public meeting and then you criticize him. I don't sense that.
Elliot's a low cost leader, right?
Right.
And he's got his way of doing things and he's got our way of doing stuff. We respect him a little more, but I think there's this place, I mean, everybody likes to eat the same food or shop in the same store, so. Um, and each of our stores, five different store brands.
Yeah.
They all, they all serve us, whatever that community is. Look at the community, hire people from the community that look like the community, so we just try to be part of the community.
Yeah, and then additionally, I mean, cannabis is all about community. That's what this plant was founded on and, and has brought people together, you know, initially medicinally for thousands of years. And so a lot of the staff that we hire and everything have that same viewpoint too. It's, you know, we're all in it together. There's room for all of us. We all kind of, to Greg's point, have like a different flavor. Our customers will shop us multiple times a week depending on the deals offered and.
We, we carry Elliot's products. Thousand square foot production facility we built. Out there and we, you gotta be friendly. We want them to carry your products, you carry their products. Reconcile stuff out, no cash.
You still have that facility in San Jose that we toured, which I think was an old bakery of some sort?
Yeah, that was still there too.
All right. All right. Well, thanks for coming forward and giving your testimony and now we'll figure out what to do next, okay? Thank you. Any questions or comments among ourselves?
Nope.
No.
You're ready.
Anybody want to take a stab at a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal CBP for NC3 Systems, DBA Deli by Kaliva for dispensary use.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santines, supported by Councilmember Wendy Morse. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santines?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. All right, till next time.
Congratulations.
We're meeting in two weeks if you want to come back.
Why don't you change the ownership and it comes back to us? Okay.
All right. So Joint Forces, I see, is in the House. Please come forward.
Got the last one.
I'm, how old's your baby now?
She just turned one on the 15th.
I know, that was the last time we went around with pregnancies, wasn't it?
She's up and walking. It's a.
More work, less sleep. Teeth coming in, napping only once a day.
Yep, getting molars, so.
Last night was very interesting, so.
But very sweet. Looks just like your dad.
Changed your life, huh?
Yes, yes.
So you read the staff report and know what we know. Is there anything else you'd like to offer about your operation and how you're doing?
I guess I would just give a little more clarity to the, to the calls that we got from law, with law enforcement. So there wasn't any attempted break-in, literally just someone walking by in the middle of the night, threw a brick at the window and walked off.
I was gonna say, this is now three years, just one random night, some guy rolls by, grabs a brick, throws it, and then just literally keeps on walking down the street, but.
Security's there, present. They're, they're a block away by the time he even gets to the gate to investigate further. So it's, it hasn't been anything that's been a threat to the business. And then with the security guard incident, the customer was being aggressive towards the security guard when asked to leave for being disrespectful to the staff. And he tried to swing at the security guard, security guard pepper sprayed him. The cops were called just for transparency of the situation and it ended up in an amicable departure of, in a ban from the.
The guy that got pepper sprayed actually was the one that called the cops.
Yeah.
Have you signed in our register?
We did.
Great, so you know the, the procedure there.
We've been here before. We're going over five years now.
This is old school for you guys. We've been here together for many years. I'm gonna start over here with Ms. Wendy Morse. Would you please have any questions?
I actually don't. Thank you for clarifying the law enforcement calls.
Thank you. As you said, we do have a guard on duty 24 hours, you know, thing, and our guard actually likes to park right in front of the gate with those lights on. So a lot of these people like see the guard, they just want to see if he's actually gonna do something, so.
Right.
I feel like we've never had any issues. No one's ever really attempted to break into ours. Plus, as you saw on my tour, we got quite a few things to stop them before they could get through.
I, I was impressed with your filtration system, that for the, there was not a smell when I, when I went, entered your property.
Thank the Lord.
Thank you, we spend a lot.
Lot of money.
That is basically the biggest thing on harvest days. Everybody at that facility knows to check doors, button up, do this. So it's, it's become a quite funny situation every time we harvest and the smell might get worse because everybody knows. And then the next day, you wait. And then if you don't get the call the next day, usually you're good.
It still works.
You're good.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Dunton, Wendy probably doesn't know that you got a few citations for the odor leaving your place, didn't you?
Just a couple.
That was part of, that was part of the financial burden.
We like to say, you know, we're trying to grow the best product in California and sometimes even the filters can't keep up with it.
Or an illegal grower down the street with 5,000 plants.
Correct, that could contribute to a few of the complaints.
It was definitely all them.
All right, Mr. Sanchez.
Oh, it wasn't done, it wasn't done.
Oh, excuse me.
Is your, there's someone there watching the operation all night?
All night.
All night, there's staff, staff there, is security or?
Security, like you said, we have that security room where he can watch all 65 cameras at one time. Uh, our two outside cameras, we spent thousands of dollars so that those, they can see three miles down there. We've helped, you know, Eurotech and some other people with our cameras, you know, things that might have happened in the street, car wrecks or whatever. But yeah, he's there all day and he calls us with any issues. Plus with the, the growing, certain things happen at night, you know, with your watering system, so we always keep him. He helps us with anything.
He's a fail safe if there's any sensor alerts inside the building, like, hey, go push this button. So that we don't have to drive down there in the middle of the night. But it's, honestly, we love our security guard. He's been the same night guard for the entirety of us being open and it's, it's nice to be able to sleep at night knowing that someone we trust and has a good track record is there taking care of you.
Good enough, that's it.
All right, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No comments, I mean, no, nothing really too deep, just I got addressed. You guys have been great, you've been wonderful. Glad everything's been resolved. You know, Happy New Year and Happy Holiday Season.
Thank you.
I know the whole situation with the newborn. I got a five month old, I get it, so.
It's a whirlwind.
Big teething issue right now. The back ones are coming in, waking up. I think we might have got three or four hours of sleep last night, so.
She's still very sweet though, I have to say. She's still very sweet.
Feeling really good.
Yeah, good. That's it, Mr. Mayor, just that comment.
Mr. Santines?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I guess you, you've come a long way. You got a new baby and then there are no complaints about the odor.
Growing together.
That's a big plus. In terms of growing, how, how is your cultivation in terms of your expectation?
Um, well.
Is it at the level that you expected to be?
As a grower, you know, that's what we've done for 20 years. Like, I mean, you're always wanting to produce better, produce more, do issues, but.
It's almost like an athlete. Are you ever truly satisfied with your performance? You can always find something that you feel like you could do better.
And that's good, and that's good, actually.
So right now, though, I feel like, you know, last year, we had added the last couple of rooms in the new veg and we expanded it. We've now got everything rolling good and I feel like we, we're pretty clockwork when, on the products coming in, coming down and.
It's been nice because we, we have to worry less now that things are more routine there and the staff is more comfortable with what they're, our expectations of them are, that we've had the ability for me to kind of work from home part of the time this year with, the first year with the baby. So when we first started this, I couldn't imagine not being there every day for 12 hours and it's become routine in a comfortable way.
And the employees we have have actually all worked out. So we have the original staff that we started with three years ago. So they know about half as much as I know about growing, so they, they can kind of almost run it, you know, they know what to do. It's just with growing, there's constant issues. There's retail, all this other stuff, you don't have those, you know. You come into growing, sometimes the lights went out, sometimes the dehu didn't work, sometimes the irrigation didn't water, sometimes bugs get in, you know. So it's just a constant, like, basically going in and looking for the issues and that's kind of what makes growing the unique part. But you can't do anything without the grow. you can't do anything without the growing, you know, it all starts with the first product, so that's why we try to, that's our main focus. Because you can't have a retail manufacturer, there's no cannabis to distribute.
If I remember correctly, I mean, when you came in the first time, I sensed that you're better experienced in terms of cultivation compared to retail.
Yes.
Agreed.
Which is good.
Agreed, but I think we have done well.
I was gonna say, dealing with the retails, we knew what they really wanted, and we are a little bit different than I think the rest of the dispensaries and Bellflower, where they're more of. That was a nice way to say it.
I'll let you.
Uh, they're more of just prototypical products, you know, they buy them from the biggest, selling it, and we're more of.
Looking for the unique things, the rare things.
The strands no one's got, the, you know, I guess you'd call it, what the young kids are really, you know, into, because, you know, you're twenty-one, the thirty-year-old smoker usually knows the varieties, they know what they want, how they want. Where the older couples, older folks will come in and they're just like, I'm looking for a bait pen, whatever it is, so we try to cater more towards the selective strands and the stuff that you can't get, because it's really easy, I would say if you went into all four of our stores, I'd say forty percent of our products are the same. Because there's only so many big bait pen companies, there's only so many edible companies that can do that, but so it's those little nuances that you can find where, you know, I'm always trying to carry whatever Elliot and Kaliba are not.
Oh, okay.
Something exotic and rare.
That was kind of funny how it's like, we don't compete with each other, but believe me, when we're on the end of the road and everybody's got to pass them to come to us, we're constantly looking at their menus and trying to find what we can get that they don't have, so there's another reason to come to Bellflower.
We have something for a connoisseur type market that's looking for something that's unique. Something that we pride ourselves in and being in touch enough to know what that is. I believe we have done good in the retail, so hopefully.
I don't know anybody else's numbers, but my parking lot's pretty busy all the time. And we're constantly working on that, I don't know what.
We, we've just.
What's the restaurant, the grocery store?
Oh, we're on the back of two different Albertson's receipts now.
So if you shop at Albertson's, look for us on the back of the receipt.
We have seen an increase in customer count, but a decrease in what an individual customer is spending, so.
Oh, really?
So, yeah, I mentioned that.
Caused a slight dip in overall total sales throughout the year.
But our customer count is, we're just there, I mean, obviously everybody knows this was a tough year, so it's like, we're getting more people, it's just instead of spending forty, they're down at like thirty-five, thirty-six.
So in September, we launched a big online project to try to grasp more patients, do reward programs, bring back a bunch of specials to just try to pick a few more people that might not be seeing us on that side street, to let them know that, that we're there keeping us on their minds with emails and letting them know what specials are and stuff like that, so hopefully in the next couple months, it'll be money well spent and we'll maintain what we're.
Revenues go up, everybody makes more money.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santaniz, so Elliot mentioned it, and some of your predecessors that talked here, location really has an impact, where if you're on a busy boulevard or on a side street.
Definitely, people are creatures of convenience and, you know, being able to get off, they've got that big store, you can't help but notice it when you drive by, even if you weren't looking for.
Yeah, I would say, being on the boulevard actually, you know, definitely does help, but a lot of people that are, that have been buying for years, even when it was black market, parking was a big thing. So I think that's where we get the help from, plus our name was around for twenty years, so people, I think a lot of people just don't know these shops are around, you know, because everybody, the main advertising is really Weed Maps, this specific app that tells you where every product is in every store, but it's like your average person doesn't know about that. So, you know, you can only do so much Instagram and stuff like that, but I think, you know, throwing events, like we throw two big events for everybody each year to try to bring in all of the bigger brands and names and, you know, bring in all the customers and try to put them all, us all together and show, you know, that there's different companies produce better products than some and than others, instead of just buying it by price.
And it's not always cost-effective for us to carry these rare, unique, something that a connoisseur might find special and seek us out specifically for, but it helps set us apart from what Elliot's doing, from what Medicine Woman is doing, and something that we're known for, so we're sticking to that game plan.
Well, you know, and I would think that you guys really went out on a limb for the filters and the cultivation, I mean, you had a tremendous expense there. And then you've got your retail, which obviously has picked up speed, does it ever, did you ever think, and I understand that you have specialty items that you can develop because you have the cultivation, but if you said, you know what, if we had to do it over again, we'd have cultivation at another place and we wouldn't have it all together, we'd just do a retail like you see Kaliva and Medicine Woman.
Cultivation's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work and a lot of expense, but I wonder whether or not that pencils out.
It is definitely not the easiest pathway to profit, but.
I would still do it together.
It's what, it's what we do.
That's what, that was what brought you into it.
That would still, I was gonna say, that's what, you know, we, that's what we started, I think that's, you know, the most peaceful part of it, just being able to see the plants and do like that, everything else is kind of monotonous, buy, sell, buy, sell, it's like I get to go in there and play with seven thousand plants at a time and try things.
It's rewarding to watch something that you helped create become successful and big, and then see the next generation of it and, and sequencing.
And we're more hands-on workers, I'm not an off. I'm not an office guy, I gotta get dirty, you know, I came straight from the grow, I'm sure I might smell to a lot of other people, but it's like getting down and getting the dirty, that's, that's the fun part of work to me.
Yeah, and you could see the others that came in and gave testimony, that was groups of people, that was, I'm in charge of six stores, I have this, you know, you, you got the sense that was more corporate than mom and pop, like you are, that's my perception, you know.
I would say that's accurate.
I'd probably say she's two or three managers, I'm two or three managers, but, you know, compared to everybody else hiring, but I think that's what's gonna survive us through, I mean, that's it, I think we're kind of coming down, but more and more, I'm sure you guys have seen more and more of these big grows are going out of business, these big old MSOs that got millions of dollars actually didn't know how to use that money very well.
No, and when we went into this venture with the cannabis, which we were kind of innovators with City of Bellflower, I felt as though it might have a six to eight-year run and that not to get too used to the income off of this, because it may be like when I thought as a kid, slot cars would be here forever, you know?
Yeah, no, we, we.
Things come and they go, you know? But, and not to say that cannabis would ever leave us, but I think the situation will continue to change as we still have never figured out what the feds want to do with it.
Right.
Exactly.
And then suddenly you're buying at Walgreens.
Yeah.
And that would change the whole trajectory again, you know, so, but we'll play it, we're grateful for the fact that you're, you're succeeding and you're stable and your families come together, I mean, we've all been through the thick and thin with each other.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's been a nice journey now that I'm glad that we're all here.
It's been a journey, I don't know how nice it's been, right?
Oh, it's nice now.
Or it is now.
It was old stuff, man.
Well, no more complaints.
No, it's kind of like childbirth, you know, they say, I'm not gonna do that again, and then two years later, it's, here I am again, you know, so.
Right.
You know, sometimes you're the problem child, sometimes you're the best child, you know? I like to say we made a full, we've come a full jump up to the good path.
No, I've never got the impression you guys have lied to us or put us on, you've always, when we asked you to do something, you went to the mat and got the money and put it together and said, that didn't work, we're gonna try it again, but you, you've tried your best, and, and I'll give you credit for that right along.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Alright, that's all we have, we'll figure this out.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to renew, for the renewal of three CBPs for Joint Forces LLC, DBA Green Wolf, for dispensary distribution and cultivation use.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, we have a motion by City Councilmember Victor Sanchez, supported by Councilmember Sunny Santaniz, please poll the council.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santaniz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Alright, we'll see you next year.
Congratulations.
Thanks, see you next year.
Yeah. Moving on. Dynasty Alliance Grow. Thanks for coming in.
Good morning, City Councilmembers and Mayor.
Thanks for being patient with us.
No problem, I'm always the last, so I'm, I'm used to it.
Always, you know?
Last is always first.
Correct, but appreciate you being with us and staying with us and listening, and you learned something from the testimony that was given, I think it's kind of an education for all of us.
Correct.
You've read the staff report, you know, I think the thing that pops out on your application is the loss of that twenty-five thousand dollars with the product, and I'm sure you've got some explanation or maybe.
Two hundred and forty.
Or two hundred and forty, I left a zero off, excuse me. But, how, how did you respond to that?
Well, the situation was that they came in with drones and they surveilled the property, it was about four to five vehicles that we captured in cameras, and one of the things that I was telling the inspector when she went is that I'm not, I would never put my security guards, you know, against ten people or more, I will never do that, so they have, they have orders to call us or the police, and then also, we, I just basically invested in a twenty thousand dollar system, which is live security system with lights and sensors all throughout the property that all the neighbors were really happy about, because they're also breaking into their vehicles and causing issues on, on the neighbor residential part of the, where my property is. So they were really happy, and they don't have any issues with the light, lighting, it has an alarm system, and I'm gonna continue using it, but I want you guys to be really open to that, I will never put my security guard in jeopardy, whether it's daytime, and it's even worse in nighttime, because if you go to that property, it's really, really dark, and there's really nobody until you pass that property. So we did get a loss, one of the problems was, and you see it in the video, in the cameras, is that the police is like right across the vehicle that dropped the drones, and they will, they actually told me directly, they were not aware that we even existed. So the main problem was they were focused on the tractor-trailer portion of it, they never went around the property, nothing, they just parked there, didn't see anything, waited a few minutes, and in the video, you see the guy over here with the, the one that dropped the drones, and the other vehicles were just like kind of passing around, it was a BMW and like about two smaller vehicles, and about four to five people broke into the property. It was boom, 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 they, they knew exactly where everything was. They did a lot of damage, and my doors are metal, and they were actually able to open them like nothing, it was like a can of sardines to them. So what I did, I actually put, put maglock, so it's magnetic, so you need to have over a ton of force to actually open the doors now. So it was a lot of investment that I had to do to re-secure that property, and still, I'm still, and I also put more surveillance video live security, which is gonna be, it's really cool because they actually speak to the people and they tell them, get the, you know what out, or we're calling the police, and they sound the alarm, and they put lights, which is red, white, and blue, so it's really, really cool, and you're not exposing anybody. Because even in the state, I was reading that if I even tell my security guards to use their weapon, I'm in trouble. I will get penalized and I'll get in trouble, so, and that's what the police told me as well, you could never, like, if you use it, either you drag them in, I'm like, well, yeah, but we have all these cameras, right, they're gonna see me dragging that person inside. So that's the thing that right now with all the laws that changed, they really are not seeing anything that they're gonna get punished for it. So you're seeing even daily in the news how they're breaking into stores, and it's scary because it's not just one person. So right now, basically I have orders that we can't stay to a certain time, even though the cameras are in, the security is there, but they're not allowed to expose themselves. The other day, they did call me, they, a pickup truck keeps parking right in front of my property, so the guy approached him and I, it was like about one o'clock in the morning, and I told the guy, stay away, call the police or call me, but the guy's not doing anything, so the police is not gonna show up, and my guy is only exposing himself or anything else, so those are the orders that I have, and I will stand my ground because I will not put anybody in harm's way. Okay, but the system that I installed is, has sensors through the whole property, and it's really cool, you guys should go in the nighttime.
We assume you, they never had any luck finding those that.
They found, oh, they actually got the cell phones, they dropped cell phones, but they were in Arab language, and the police told me they couldn't break into them, and I said, well, I think you guys have the resources to have like a geek or geek squad, you know, break into the cell phones, and they said no, so.
They could not translate those phones?
They couldn't even, they didn't even like hacked into it, he dropped it.
So mechanically, the phone was different?
No, 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 they just said they didn't have the resources to hack into the phone because it was locked. So my neighbors are really happy that the system is there, I've only had one time when it went off, and I've had three times that we actually captured the drones coming back.
Okay.
And they actually are coming with drones, they surveilled the whole property, and then they do what, what they gotta do, either they leave or they do more, but knock, knock on wood, everything has been good.
Well, it sounds like you've gone the extra mile to try to secure it.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
And you're, of the applicants, you're the only one that really has a neighborhood influence, you know?
Yes, I do, and they're really happy, actually, we help each other, a couple of neighbors have stopped by, they have never complained, I do ask them because I am concerned, I'm also, I also live in Bellflower, and if I had a business like that, I did mention to them the camera system, and they were really, really happy, one of them is actually a parole officer, parolee, and she was really, really excited, she's like, I don't care, I'd rather hear the lights and the cameras and the si, and the siren than have these people still breaking into our stuff.
Good. So, started this way, let's start with Councilmember Sunny Santaniz, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, for instance, I'm sorry about the burglary and its impact on your business. Couple of questions, I understand your, your stand about not putting your, your security persons in harm's way, but during the burglary, isn't there supposed to be surveillance camera within the facility to be on?
Not inside the facility, because I have an alarm system, and they're actually back in the trailer, but when the, the drones went in, they saw where every, where the personnel was. So they broke in through the front, through the glass door.
So you're required to provide surveillance inside a growing facility at night?
Not, the security doesn't go in because I have the, I have, everything is censored.
Surveillance.
Video, of course, yes.
Was it on?
Yes, the police took video, they took their phone out and looked and checked my cameras, took the video, I still have it on my phone.
And they couldn't identify?
They just, they just, no, they just said that was enough, and they left, and they came back like two more times, and that was it. But the main thing with them was that they didn't know we existed, like that my business was there, and that's.
No, my question was inside the growing facility?
Yes, sir, it's inside, outside. And the person that went to visit me a couple of weeks, maybe a month and a half ago, she took the videos as well, and I gave her the USB and everything. We, I gave her from the inside and the actual security system that I hired with the video, video system.
So they could identify the?
You cannot, they all look like Arabs, they all look like my son, they, they, I thought one of them was my son, because they're tall, young, one of them was covered, but they have the hoodies.
Oh, they were hiding hoodies?
Yes, sir, that, I mean, it's, it's organized crime, they're not gonna break into facilities, know exactly where your product sits, what rooms to break, whatnot, you know, it's like everything was so planned, you could see it in the video, I even have video as well in my cellphone.
The way you describe it, is it an inside job?
They say, but honestly, I doubt it, it's very easy to look at properties in the map and access documents via internet and city and state. So it might be that they have, because I have to submit a pa, a plan of my facility to the state, and if anybody could just have access to it or a connection with somebody higher level, they could access those maps and know exactly where everything is.
But it's not a public record though, those plans are not part of the public records.
Correct, but they just need to know somebody, I don't really think it was an inside job, to be honest with you, I, I lost a lot of money, and I think that my employees, they all showed up, they were all scared, I really don't think so, I, I doubt it, I hope not, because they're still the same employees.
In terms of your loss, is it covered by your insurance?
At the time, no, because I've been having quite a bit of problems with the insurance, I just got exchanged because they're telling me that I'm a very high liability because I, I have the body shop next to me and the cannabis, and it's been really, really hard, so at that time, I was not insured, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, maybe I heard wrong, but I just wanna get a little clarification. Uh, cause I kinda heard two, two sep- or two contradictory, uh, informations. Staff noted that surveillance was not provided.
I think Mr. Hawkman can clarify a little bit more on this, but to my understanding, there was exterior camera footage provided to law enforcement. It was just the interior. Yeah, exterior, not interior or indoor footage provided to law enforcement.
On the interior, isn't that also surveilled as well?
Yes, you could walk into my facility and see about, about ninety cameras.
When I did the tour, um, and, and so was the interior not provided?
No, they, they recorded it with their cellphone and told me that was enough.
Okay.
And then on the exterior where you see the vid- the vehicles driving and then the, the, um, what is it called? The drones moving from the vehicles? That's the video that they requested on a USB.
Got it.
What wasn't provided was the primary, um, video through the system itself. So the responding deputy took video of the video.
Got it.
Which wasn't as clear. There could have been a nuance where, you know, something was, a mask might have come off or hoodie. That wasn't able to be determined. So what, uh, she wasn't able to provide the primary, uh, to our investigator. So that's the part that didn't happen. You know what I'm saying?
I know, I understand that part. So let me just, she wasn't able? Or they didn't request it? I, I just wanna make sure that.
Sure. Yeah, it was requested a couple of times by the investigator, as I understand it.
Okay.
And, uh, that wasn't ever provided subsequent to the requests. We just had to go with the secondary video in terms of the investigation.
Uh, and then there was, so it sounds like, I'm a little even more confused, cause so cameras, you, you had a guard on site. And then originally I thought there was no cameras and I thought, but you just upgraded, you've just upgraded your system essentially.
No, I added additional cameras that cost me about twenty thousand dollars, installation cameras and the monthly fee. So it's cameras that will, has, they place sensors throughout the, the property. So as soon as you hit that sensor, it triggers the, the cameras, but you have a live person looking in the camera twenty-four seven. Plus the securities, but my securities are not allowed to even approach anybody. They just have to make a phone call either to me or the police. But it's mainly my system that I have because I don't want anybody harmed or killed in my property.
Right, no, I totally understand that. Um, well, you know, I'm sorry that this happened to you and, or it happened to the business and, um, I'm glad you're taking remedies.
Yes.
Uh, moving forward. And, uh, just seems like, uh, unfortunate event. Not much I can say really. Uh, everything else, I mean, there's no other calls of logs, so I think, you know, from my perspective, there's really no other concerns. Uh, I haven't heard any negative, uh, feedback from the members in the community in that area. Um, and I know that you guys do call in bulky items and other things like that and help facilitate those kind of, uh, calls. So I appreciate that. Please continue to do that.
Thank you.
It helps me and it helps us address those issues. But with that, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'll conclude my comments.
All right. Before I go back, what surprises to me is the story of the phones, Joel. Where they couldn't translate the Arabic or get into those phones. Did you know that?
It, well, the phone was recovered. It was sent to the geek unit with the sheriff's department and for reasons unknown to me personally, they weren't able to crack it and get anything out of it. So there's no workable information.
Like I do, or, but I'm a layman here. I can barely work my own phone, so.
I'm not a geek, so I didn't really know how that goes, but it was.
That's up for debate too.
Yeah, well, I guess that give you all a softball just then, but, um, but it was sent to the unit within the department that does this kind of thing, so.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, pro ten, Mr. Dutton.
Thank you. I, I think Apple is the only phone you really can't crack. Except the Israels. Israelis do it.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's the thing.
Really?
Well, the funny thing is.
And Pomona that got, it was, you know, one of those things.
The funny thing is that they told me they couldn't crack it, but they knew it was an Arab language. So I, I was like, okay, so how did you even get to that, that it was Arab, you know, but you couldn't crack it? So it was kinda like a weird situation.
You know, it comes up, enter your code, maybe. And, or Face ID. Anyway, yeah, I'm really sorry is what happened, but I'm as confused as I think all of us are here of. So, the inside video wasn't able to extract from your video recorder to give to them?
I, I honestly, they recorded with their phones and told me that was enough.
You said you had, um.
A USB that I turned in because they asked for the outside recording.
Wouldn't you say, hey, no, let me give you a USB for the inside?
Well, I assumed that they were doing their job and enough was when they were recording.
Well, a phone on the phone, I know what that looks like, cause I've done it with my security camera. It is, you just get the logist, that's all.
Right.
You get to see people stealing your stuff.
Right.
That's fun.
Well, honestly, even the department, the sheriff that attended the phone call, he even told me they were just gonna, if they did get caught, they were just gonna get a slap on the hand. That's basically what the officer told me.
So I can't believe they would say that.
I'm not lying. I wouldn't say something that I didn't hear. Well, unfortunately, at the time, there was no insurance, but.
Yeah. I got a question for staff. Is, um, Dynasty following all the security guidelines at this point in time or at the point in time of the theft or for the past year that are required under their license?
The, uh, in reviewing the notes from the inspector, there, there was a cou- couple issues. One had to do with a door that was seemingly too heavy for, um, to be open, a gate that's too, too heavy for its uh, tracks and system. So that's been upgraded or will be. Uh, the other had to do with the security guard and at one point there was a guard, best I can tell. During the, uh, burglary situation, there was no guard mentioned in the investigation, so I would assume there wasn't a guard. And then subsequently, um, on an inspection, I believe there's a guard been put back in to accompany the twenty-four hour monitoring system. So there would be two issues then that didn't pass muster.
Okay, now I'm confused again. Cause of what I heard, I thought I heard, but maybe I didn't hear it, was during the incident, the burglary, there's an area or somewhere where the security is in another building or another container.
It's a little trailer.
Little trailer, you call it something, yeah. So it's not in, so any noises in that facility, he's not gonna really hear. But he's in a trailer and one of the trailers on the site of, is the trailer over where all the repairs are going, the?
Uh, well, yes, all the way to the back, but we changed that and he needs to be walking around.
Was on a different property line than.
Correct. Yes. But that's changed. Yes.
But, so back to my question to staff, because staff knows the security requirements of what is supposed to be there in, in working and security at point in time. Are we following all the paper documents that say what's supposed to be there?
Yeah, again, in, uh, speaking with the investigator who handled it from code, um, the guard wasn't there during, um, a period of time and has been advised to replace and a guard wasn't mentioned during the follow-up investigation with the sheriff. So I think it was a guard was in place, a guard wasn't in place, and now a guard presumably is in place again.
The question required at the time of the robbery?
Yes.
Okay, but the guard wasn't there at the time of the robbery?
Correct, not mentioned.
So the guard, you say the guard wasn't there, but you just said the guard was there.
Well, he wasn't inside, where they broke in, he wasn't in that area. He was all the way in the back. So when the drones.
But it was on site.
Correct, but it was, unfortunately, they surveillance the property. You see them driving around for probably like about thirty minutes. And then when they release their drones, they probably make sure that the guard was where it was and then they broke through the other side, which is the street.
Let me clarify again. Joel, so the guard that was in the trailer, was he supposed to be on site in the facility when it was robbed? Or was he okay in the trailer when it was robbed?
Uh, presumably it would be okay to be in the trailer, but what I'm saying with the investigation is no guard was mentioned as being on site at all. Now, that could have been an oversight, but normally when you would describe and discuss a, a case like this, there would be a mention of a guard being there or not.
So going forward, we have an agreement with Ms. Kristorna that we're gonna have the guard inside the building, so we don't have a repeat of the robbery. Is that the game? I don't know.
Um, but can I say something? I, I, the alarm system is a little bit better than the guard inside. I can provide the documents. They're also licensed through the state. Um, but I wouldn't want anybody inside the property because it's, it's censored with the alarm system. And I give that more to having somebody disarm it, go through one side and maybe somebody else, like it happened, breaking in through the other side and hurting him. That's basically, um, like I stated, not only one person is breaking in, it's several of people breaking in. And for sure, he, they had, when you see them in surveillance, which I did have it, they have the, um, the screw, the metal things that you use to replace your tires. They had several of those that you see them breaking the doors. They were very young, very quick. Um, my guy, the one that's a nice, pretty chubby and stalky, so, I mean, that would, uh, outnumber the person. So I wouldn't want somebody, well, they could, they could arm it and put inside as well, I assume. Because you could arm it outside or indoor as well, but it's just.
All right. That's not what I'm concerned with.
Yeah, hold on, let me back up a little bit. So Travis, the guard that she's describing on site in the trailer, that is okay according to the guidelines?
I'll read exactly what's in the guidelines, just so we're all clear here.
That's where I'm going.
So it says if the cannabis business has a separate cultivation site, at least one security personnel must be present at that cultivation site on duty twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So it says the security personnel must provide security inside the cannabis business along the outside perimeter of the cannabis business, at parking sites immediately adjacent to the cannabis business and used by members of the cannabis businesses or business and sidewalks adjacent to the cannabis business. And it says at least one security personnel.
Cause that's what I remember and it's a long time ago since I read, read that stuff. And that's what I'm getting at. I wanna know if this facility was in violation.
It just says, present at the cultivation site. That's what it says.
And then you said inside.
Approval. Yeah, it says that they must, um, provide security inside the cannabis business and along the outside perimeter of the business as well.
What form of security? I would suspect we got a roving security or something. I'm, you know, I just, just can't comprehend this kinda setup.
Be just.
And I get, I get the, what, when the sheriff, the sheriff showed up on a burglar alarm, is what they call, and I get it, you have beams somewhere and they jumped the beams.
No, they left. The, the police left.
I know, I get that, I get that. They went, they looked, they didn't see anybody running around, but you have these laser beams that go, that talk to each other. If that beam's broken, it goes off. Is that what, what, uh, that's what goes off and calls the alarm company?
On the alarm system, that, well, they can install the laser, they, it's just on the doors.
It's just on the doors, okay.
This is frustrating, cause.
It is.
So the, the, the way that the code reads, the, the approval reads on their security, they have a, a person on site, maybe not necessarily inside the buildings on site, but there is the security camera system inside the facility. Does that meet the requirements of the code? At least in your opinion, BNA? Cause I mean, we're hearing a lot of different stories here and it's kinda frustrating to me that it's not clear.
It would meet the requirement in my mind.
Travis, do you agree with that? Does that, does, what the story that she just told, does that meet the requirement? Cause this is difficult for me. That, that robbery was suspect at best. It was very difficult to understand, so.
And it still is.
Yeah, it is, still is, right. So my, my question is, cause we're gonna go forward and I don't wanna, if it happens again, we're gonna have to answer for this. If the security that she's talking about, does that meet the approval requirements for the security?
Maybe I, uh, what I said is there was no mention of a guard even being there at all in a trailer or anywhere on the site as communicated to me by the investigator.
That's not my question. So that's not the question. We'll sort that out separately. As she described, with the security system in place and the guard on the facility, but not necessarily inside the building, does that meet the requirements of her permit?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we're wrestling with here. What the report says is something different, you know, that, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, let's, I, yeah, I think Carl's right. Why don't we recess for five minutes? Let's take a look at the security plan because I do not want any more confusion on this going forward. It's my last act here, which literally will be, I wanna make sure that's straight for everybody.
I, I got a question, Mayor, before we recess for five minutes on that. So, where the guard was, if the guard was actually there, there's monitors in the trailer?
No, sir.
So he's, what's he there for if he's not watching the monitors? Security to me would be a security guard watching monitors for what's inside that building. That's, that's where I get, would that, how I interpret it, okay, if you got cameras in the place, the security guard to me would don't have to be there. Somebody need to be watching them.
No, and that's why I, basically before I put the cameras in the trailer, I, that's why I hired that additional, uh, security night. It's called night protection, um, security system. And they have full access to everything, but they're not exposing anybody. Or they're not exposing themselves. So I have the security, but this system is way better than even having a person in there. I installed it right away after. It took about three weeks to have it installed. Correct. Yes, but it's censored, alarmed. Uh, the people are looking, they see, they look, it's censored. So it's really, really, it's, like, to me, it, I'm actually able to sleep at night.
The security guard company that you hired, does he come with the trailer? Or do you hire the guard and you just have a place for him?
I just had a place, but he never, he didn't come out or anything.
But do you, he, does he have records of all security when they, they supposed to walk around and check certain things? Check doors at certain times. Is there any log for that?
No, I didn't implement that. I didn't.
Well, the security company would. That's, you hire a security guard, there are certain rules that the company that oversees manages them.
Right. The people that I have, they're licensed and I have a state license through them that I renew every year. But I hire them. It's not through a company.
I thought you mentioned a security company's name.
The additional company that I hired after the robbery is an additional company with a contract.
Past tense. And this is what I'm concerned with, past tense.
You're a hundred percent right. And the whole thing is, as you know, this has troubled me from the beginning, this robbery and the, and the follow-up on it for lots of reasons. But going forward, we gotta get this right. And that's the whole point of this, why I wanna take a recess. So she understands completely what she has to do going forward with regard to the security, cause
Correct.
If this happens again, it's shame on us. That's the thing.
Well, I, I get what you're trying to say, but obviously, I don't know how that can work now. I'm, I'm really.
Well, now it's, it's the security guard plus the additional system live that I have. So you're having.
I don't have much faith with cameras because I've seen my cameras and they're pretty good.
Oh, no, I spent.
You get to just steal, you get to see them steal your stuff.
No, 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 but it's, it's actually a live person speaking to them and actually.
Well, it's like a Ring camera then.
I think it's fair to say, Mr. Dutton, we all have concerns about what occurred in the past. We just gotta make sure we get this right going forward.
I, that's what I want.
And I could provide documentation from the company and maybe a whole.
I am, I'm pretty concerned that you didn't volunteer the inside video. That is concerning to me.
Volunteer, sir.
That's the way my belief system is. Well, I would've, I would've been, hey, guys, you forgot this.
Well, I mean, you're thinking that they know, but my concern was when they got there is that they left because they didn't know I existed. So that was one of my concerns that I feel that I should have been protected as well by the sheriff department.
Well, yeah, that's a lot of money.
They only did so much because they didn't know I was even there. They told me when they got there, we didn't even know you existed. That was their exact words.
I understand that.
Right, and they never, if he would've want, if he would've said, give me everything, I would've, but he only requested the outside that they didn't record on the phone, sir. It's not something that I'm, that I'm gonna just say, oh, no, I don't wanna give it to you.
This is still an open case. So if, if, if sheriff's department comes in now and they said, give me everything, you could give them everything. You have it.
You have it saved?
I have it on my phone. It's ninety days. It gets erased.
Well, but, but there's, but there's a point with the securities that you can archive it. Your system would be, any system can archive a certain daytime to archive that and it won't get erased after ninety days.
Uh, well, I mean, I would have to hire a tech, but I, I was not aware of that. I think that if the sheriff would have been doing their proper job, they would have gone back and said, or called me and say, give it to me now.
Okay, so you just admitted that you would have to hire someone to monitor, to operate your security system.
But what you're just saying, sir.
Somebody's not there to be able to do it.
Let me ask this question. Joel, if, if what was said, is that your understanding of the way this went down with the sheriff's department? That they requested that and it wasn't given or that indeed was given?
It was requested by the investigator at, at least twice to provide a thumb drive of the interior video. And the only video that was, that was not provided and the only video that was in the file then became that secondary video.
Huh, okay.
You still wanna do a five-minute recess? Or we already done that?
If, if Travis has the information.
So.
And I think, I think that Travis should read the security condition right now to the council. And then we need to come to a consensus on what she's doing going forward. We'll meet the condition of that security. and then we need to come to a consensus on what she's doing going forward, will meet the condition of that security guideline. So, and then we'll, we'll go from there. I just, I just don't want any confusion coming up next year, if another issue happens, that we're having this debate again, or, or Mr. Smoot's having this debate again, cause that would be really infuriating, so.
Well, obviously, Bernice has already said that they've monitored drones coming back, right?
Yes, correct.
Three times, so they wanna get her again.
Yeah.
You know, we gotta.
So Travis, why don't we, uh, watch you?
What has happened when the drone, when they have, saw the drones coming?
Well, the security guard takes video, and then the alarm and the sensors, they go off, and the lights go off, and they tell them, you know, if, if they see a person, they would speak to them, but at this point, when they see the drones, they put the lights on them, and then they just leave. I think I had a record, the longest that it took, the drones being there, and they were actually by the trailer, it was about maybe two minutes recording, and then they just left.
So upon exposure, lights going on, somebody physically talking to them, they go out.
I'm actually thinking of buying the ones that you deactivate the drones, and they just fall. Cause there's, I was actually re, I'm, I'm doing my homework. What needs to be understood is like, I wish I had the money, but cultivation is not like a dispensary. Cultivation, I just pumped 250,000 on new lights, and this is just to cover half of my facility. So it is a lot of money, and I understand your concern, but I am trying my best, and my way of doing it is double covering. I could sleep at night, and I could tell you they won't break in, because I installed that additional, I'm paying additional money to have somebody, and I know you're saying the cameras, you should actually take the time and go see these cameras. These cameras are huge, so the magnification on it, it's better than any ring that you could install in your home. So I'm not worried about that. It's just an additional, and I could provide documentation on how it works and how they surveillance, but it's somebody literally sitting in front of that screen, looking at everything.
If they ignored all of that, they ignore the lights, cause they don't care.
No, they actually speak to you and tell you, get out, or the cops are gonna be called. It's a live person, and they have speaker.
Is there still a security guard somewhere, though?
Correct.
I know he's not coming out, I understand the, that part of it, but, okay, he's still there somewhere, calling 911.
Correct, correct, both of them would call 911.
So there's two guards there now?
The camera one and the guard, correct, yes.
Hey Bernice, you, you said the drones come back three times, and the security guard was able to get rid of them?
To record them.
How does, to record them, how does he know that they were up there? Did he hear them?
Yes.
So it's a nighttime, I'm assuming?
Correct.
So how did he see, see them? Is he the only one, a live person to see them, the camera don't see them?
No, the, the camera?
Cameras can see the drones?
Yes, because they, they trigger the sensors, remember, they, this camera system installed.
So the drones are coming that low?
Um, semi, cause they were, in the video, you could see about this size.
They lowered it, the drone lowered enough to.
And the property, the property has sensors, so when you trigger the sensor, it comes out.
I'll tell you what I'd like to do.
I'm kinda losing control here.
I'd like to, I think it would be prudent to continue the hearing till future date, get the investigator to answer the question, because I don't know that we're having, that we have all the facts right now. I think there's a lot of people that are assuming a lot of things that were said, that may or may not have been said. I'm not, frankly, I'm not convinced with Ms. Kristorna's conversation with the Sheriff's Department, nor for that matter, Mr. Mr. Hockman's understanding what went on here. I think we need to talk to the investigator himself to find out what he believes happened, and more importantly, what he believes should happen going forward. Cause this is, this is a mystery, and there was a breakdown somewhere, and I'm not 100% certain where that started from, or necessarily how to correct it. And you know how my, my cynical sense is, that if we don't correct it, it's going to occur again, and that would be infuriating. So it's really your judgment, but I don't know that we have all the answers we need right now on the security issues on that side.
Well, how does that impact whether or not she, she needs her license and a timely man?
Yeah, I know, I mean, I think there's time to schedule a date, and we could schedule another, we could do an emergency meeting in 24 hours, if we need to, just, a special meeting, I should say, to talk about this, but I, I think there needs to be more conversation to be had on this.
Cause I don't feel comfortable voting.
Yeah.
Okay, I get that.
I don't.
But I wanna make sure that we don't. Do, we need to keep all the balls up.
Yeah, I know, and I don't think there's any, I mean, this isn't meant to be punitive, and I don't think there's any concern about Ms. Kristorna losing her license on this. I just wanna make sure that we know the facts before going forward, because this is a very unique circumstance on this.
So what's our time element here to make sure that we find out what we wanna know, and we can get her approved?
You'd do a 30-day provisional approval, if you want us, we'll get this done. Yeah, I mean, if, if we're concerned about timing.
Can't we do an emergency extension of her thing?
Yeah, I think that what you do today is, you do, you just, you, you extend the permit for 30 days while you're investigating this.
Pretty unusual, you know, robbery.
Right.
Yeah, it is good through December 31st, we probably have time to get this done before.
And if not, if not, couldn't we have a meeting that, under certain circumstances, to give her an extension?
Sure, yeah, no, there's lots of ways to do this, again.
I don't, you know, we're expecting her to spend more money on security, and then we don't have her to have an impact.
Well, I think that there's a lot of cross-talk on the security, and that's the part that's concerning me. And like, like Carl just pointed out, we have till December 31st to finish this, and, and extend the permit, and give her a new permit. But, and I think we have time to get this looked into before then, hell, it's 16 days, 17 days, so.
But are we, are we basing it on what passed, or what was being corrected? Because it was corrected, and therefore.
Well, all, so I think, the answer to your question is both. I think we wanna get to the facts, that we understand what hap, what the investigator concluded, and then secondarily, what the go-forward is. What we need to do going forward, I think is what we need to be looking at.
And what you've done is all very good.
Yeah, yeah, we're not critical of what you've done.
Not criticizing that, we may have to improve upon that a little bit, or get some, you know, have a, it's very nebulous there as to whether we have a security guard on the property.
Right.
And he may have been asleep in your vest.
And I, and I wanna make sure that we get that language right, so your, your permit may be amended to include the specific language on the security guard on that. That's, I think, what we're looking at.
And if you want me to provide as well, the additional security system that I've implemented, I could have the company write you guys the, the contract and the full report of how it functions.
I think that might be.
Cause I, I think it's kinda like, it's not understood, but it's, it's a great security system to have.
That might be, that might be the right course of action.
You probably should present a whole new security plan of what's up to date, because I, I got reservations if you were even complying before.
If I was, I'm sorry.
If you were complying about this, complying with the security before, I have reservations about past.
Correct.
And you have a per, permit and your license to do this under certain requirements, I need to know before I renew another license if you were in compliance. And, and you know, and if you weren't, you're showing us how you fixed it, so it's both that we need.
Yeah, you know, Ms. Ray, the easiest way, and it was, I think it goes back to my original inclination, the cleanest way to do this is probably extend the permit through the end of January, have Ms. Kristorna submit a new security plan, uh, and then we reconsider at that point.
Yeah.
And after, in the meantime, we talk to the investigator to find out exactly what happened.
All right, so what do you?
That way she's not penalized, we get our answers we need, and we can go forward.
Do you need council action to extend that permit?
Through the end of January, so January 31st.
And this is not about you.
No.
It's about, it's about what can happen with our other entities and licensees. We have to be fair across the board with everybody, we don't want someone coming back and pointing fingers later.
100%.
We hate that.
And if what she's saying true, the drones and stuff, it's gonna happen again.
Yeah, they're already.
I just don't want to see that happen. I was very concerned about the last one, it bothered me in millions of ways, not least of which was your safety.
Correct.
So that's why I think we need to get a handle on that.
All right, Wendy, before we move on, do you have any questions?
I don't.
I have.
You got more? You've overstipped your limits.
Time has expired.
I think I would probably like a site visit, or staff needs to have a site visit to put, piece stuff together prior to another meeting or something.
I think that's prudent, I think we should all visit that site.
If we approve the extension, we've got another six weeks.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you want to do a provisional extension to the end of January, then one of the conditions would be, is to submit a new security plan in accordance with the conditions of approval that already exist for approval by, uh, our folks, which may include a site visit.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd have to schedule 221 site visits, so we don't have a Veronica issue.
I think that would be wise, under the circumstances, cause not only you got blindsided by a burglary, we did too. We never thought that would happen, now for other ones, do we need to tighten up other?
No, and I apologize, I did get it very comfortable. I mean, I was, I was even leaving my facility at 1:00 in the morning, and now, you know, I can't even do that anymore. And so I, I'm not gonna lie, I got comfortable, and, but now, you know, it's like, I, I learned my lesson as well, so.
Expensive lesson.
Everything in this industry is expensive.
That's the most prudent way to go, and then in the meantime, we can meet with the investigator as well, and get his read on, on what, with the lapse in security, and whatever else we need to do on that.
All right, so does anyone who would do the motion as explained to us by council? That we're gonna do a provisional extension till January 30, and that we're going to, in the interim, have a, uh, chance to look at her security system, or not system, plan. We're gonna have the sheriff, uh, detectives come in and reinvent what they've seen already.
Well, I think more, more specifically, we want the detective investigating the case to come in and clarify, cause I, we don't know. I mean, based on what I've heard today, I have no idea what happened on that.
I think we're just making a motion just to extend it, and then staff knows what the direction we need to do, just comments.
And then, and, and with the provision that, uh, Ms. Kristorna's gonna have to submit an updated security plan, that we're gonna have to approve at that point.
So for clarification, so, so the action is to extend the current, um, uh, license for one month, basically.
Yeah, one month beyond the expiration.
The current license, the current license.
Current license.
The current permit, extend for one more month.
She's good for 30 more days beyond December 31st.
All right.
So that's, so there, for, you got a question here, but let's, how many more questions?
Attorney question.
Oh, let's do the attorney question.
Did we lose our $20,000 in tax for this $240,000?
No.
No, she pays a square footage tax on that.
She pays a square footage on the, so that canopy, she's based upon the canopy, so you had to pay tax on?
Product you didn't have.
Product that got stolen?
Yeah, I don't think she was happy about that either.
No, and plus, I was being overcharged as well by the city, so.
Well, hold on, let me correct that. I would say she was not being overcharged, I was saying that we made a provision and an accommodation for Ms. Kristorna on the tax of her square footage.
We remeasured the building.
Let me just make, you were, but not anymore.
Not anymore.
So.
You want a motion?
Yeah, you know, you wanna word it?
Basically, the motion is just extend the current permit by one month.
No, for till January 30th.
Yeah, by one month.
Beyond December 31st. She's good till the end of the year.
Oh, she's good till December 30th, okay, sorry, I'm not from today.
The motion is to extend the current permit by one month to expire January 31st.
And submit a new security plan for approval.
And submit a new security plan.
So between now and, uh, January 30th, she's gotta submit that plan.
With the renewal fee being retroactive.
So when will this be scheduled for, public hearing again, is first or second meeting in January?
That'd be up to Mr. Smoot.
Well, the first one's already a special meeting.
Yeah, it depends, depends on staff's availability.
Second meeting, okay, all right.
So was our second meeting the one that we're doing on Thursday, because we're going in Sacramento?
No, that's the first meeting.
Okay.
That's the rescheduled first meeting, second meeting will be.
So we're gonna do date certain?
Do it a date certain, but continue the public hearing till January, the, have a calendar.
January 1st?
I don't know.
22nd.
22nd, January 22, yeah.
All right, so that's part of your motion?
Yes, that's part of my motion.
And the other elements will take care of themselves?
Okay.
All right, so there's the motion provided by Councilmember Sunny Santinez. Do we have any support for that motion?
I'll second.
All right, support by Councilmember Wendy Morse, please poll the council.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, so, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna make you better than you ever were before.